Pam, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I appreciate you checking.
Cool. I'm driving from one side of the west side to Oscar. I will be there in a few minutes, but here.
Thank you for letting me know.
Good afternoon. The Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting for March 12, 2025 is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Slick?
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley?
Here.
Commissioner Hagens?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland invites the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There's also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. Public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. All right, we'll start with commissioner reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report this month? Okay, I have two things to report, actually. On February 28th, I attended the Williams and Russell groundbreaking. That was a terrific event. It's a great, well, it's quite a, quite a project, and it's been a seven or eight year process now to get to where we are. Hundred and twenty million dollar development with affordable housing and a black business hub included, so quite a milestone for the community. And it was a great, it was a great event. Nice weather, too. So it was, it was terrific. And then, secondly, I attended a state of the economy downtown and central city briefing for elected officials. That was a collaboration with the Portland Metro Chamber. And we did a presentation about kind of where the local economy is at. I think it went pretty well. There is a Portland six-month economic action plan that was circulated at that meeting. And if anybody's interested, I'd be happy to share a copy with you at some point. I can forward it to you by email. So anyway, that's, that's that. If there's no other comments, then we'll have the executive director report with Shay Flaherty-Batine.
Thank you, Chair Cruz. For the record, again, my name is Shay Flaherty-Batine, currently serving as interim executive director. Just building on what Chair Cruz just shared, I'm excited to share that on Friday, February 28th, along with Chair Cruz, some colleagues and I attended the Williams and Russell groundbreaking event. And just to add to what Chair Cruz shared, the development's going to breathe new life into the 1.9 acre site at North Russell Street and North Williams Avenue. It's led by the Williams and Russell CDC and its commercial development partner, Andre. This project's going to provide 85 affordable one-to-three bedroom units, including a culturally-specific daycare on the first floor, 20 townhomes for ownership, and a 30,000-square-foot business hub to support entrepreneurs, workforce development, and community organizations. As you know, commissioners, we've partnered on this effort since its inception in 2017. U.S. A board provided $10 million of a forgivable loan to the CDC to fund remediation efforts at the site and construction of the planned business hub. Many folks have been involved in this effort over the years, and I want to acknowledge a few of them who are no longer here at Prosper Portland, including Kimberly Branham, Eric Iverson, Kim Moreland, and Tori Campbell for their early leadership in getting the process underway. And for our team here now, I want to recognize Amy Nagy, Sharon Smith, Charles Funches, Kay Little, Oscar Novello, and Lisa Abouaf, who continue to work alongside the CDC and our institutional partners to see this come to fruition. I'm very pleased that we reached this milestone. I look forward to working alongside the CDC and the extended team for many years to come. I also want to note that we're about to kick off another round of the Community Livability Grant Program fiscal year 2025-26. As a reminder, the CLG program award proposals, it awards proposals from community-based organizations for projects that foster vibrant and healthy neighborhoods and improve the prosperity of area residents and businesses. This year, in line with where we still have remaining TIF resources, nonprofit organizations, neighborhood and business associations, and neighborhood groups located within the Gateway Regional Center, Interstate Corridor, and North McAdam TIF districts are all eligible to apply. While the grant application period officially opens on Monday, April 15th, Prosper Portland is offering a pre-application webinar next Tuesday, March 18th, from noon to 1:30 p.m. via Zoom. For information on the grant and the upcoming webinar, please visit prosperportland.us/CLG. I also want to note that this year's Scale Up Event Grant Application closes on Monday, March 17th. The Scale Up Event Grant is a collaboration between our team here at Prosper and Travel Portland, and that's our Office of Events and Film. It's a competitive grant opportunity designed to provide funding and technical assistance for local Portland events that will be held throughout the second half of 2025, that's July through December, that are positioned particularly to grow and attract attendance beyond the Portland metro region. We're trying to get folks to come back to the central city and to the Portland city proper. Awarded packages will be comprehensive programs consisting of $25,000 in direct financial support, plus custom technical, marketing, administrative, and logistical assistance provided by Travel Portland and Prosper Portland. Please visit portlandeventsandfilm.com/scaleupgrant for more information there. Now, if you'll indulge me, I want to take a few moments to recognize someone whose last day at Prosper Portland is, I'm sad to say, today. Our friend and colleague, Justin Douglas, is leaving the agency after 18 years to pursue an exciting new opportunity. All of us who've had the pleasure of working with him know, Justin has accomplished a lot over these years. He's held a variety of roles, and I'd like to highlight just a few of the many projects, initiatives, and programs that Justin has led, supported, and partnered on. During his time here to date, Justin has secured the adoption of the Central Gateway Redevelopment Strategy. He amended the Gateway Master Street Plan, which led to the district's first local improvement district and development of middle-income housing at the Rose at Gateway. He was a key project lead on the work to acquire, remediate, and master-plan the four-acre site that became the Nick Fish and Gateway Discovery Park. He co-led community engagement efforts in the creation of the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative. Partnered on the creation of the Lentz Five-Year Action Plan and the Gateway Action Plan. He managed production and secured adoption of our 2015 to 2020 strategic plan. He also coordinated engagement across a number of our advisory groups, including the Gateway Program Advisory Committee, Gateway Redevelopment, Urban Plaza, and Neighborhood Park Citizens Advisory Committee, the Neighborhood Economic Development Leadership Group, Central City Budget Advisory Committee, our Community Budget Committee, Urban Renewal Amendment Advisory Committees, of course, our Advanced Portland Implementation Team, and the Advanced Portland Advisory Committee. It's a lot of committees. He led the creation of the Portland Community Investment Fund. He secured the 2015 approval of amendments to six urban renewal areas. He managed and secured approval of a substantial amendment to the Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. And perhaps most impressive of all, Justin secured the adoption of approximately 600 Prosper Portland Board items, only three of which did not pass unanimously, which is a Cal Ripken-level streak. Go Orioles! Justin is from Baltimore, y'all. You'll never catch me making a sports reference again. But please, please believe me when I say there are many, many more items that I could mention. But I'll say that in all of those tasks, Justin brought true professionalism, unwavering commitment to clear and effective content, and a desire to do great work on behalf of Prosper Portland, the city, and all Portland residents. I know that as an introvert, this much time in the spotlight is probably a bit of a nightmare for you, Justin. I promise I'll wrap up. But I want to express my appreciation for all the work you have accomplished and the way that you accomplished it. I'm pleased that in your new role as the Economic Development Director for the City of Gresham, you'll still be actively engaged in the region. I expect we'll have opportunities to work together in the future. So thank you for all your outstanding work over the years, and I wish you the best of luck and much success moving forward.
And of course, commissioners. Yeah, yeah. I think we're, we're going to open it up for Justin to say a few words, and of course, if all of you would like to say something as well.
Thank you, Executive Director Batine, Chair Cruz, members of the board, I'm Justin Douglas, Policy Manager. I did want to say a few words today, partly just because this is a difficult transition for me, and I've been struggling to find closure. And by sharing some words with you all, I think that selfishly, this will help me find a little bit of closure in this transition of my life. Shay is right. I'm from Baltimore, and I did want to share with you a little bit of personal history, which is why this work is so important to me. I was born and bred in Baltimore. Baltimore in 1970 had a population of about 900,000 people. Today, it's approximately 570,000 people. So to think about a city that I loved and that my parents raised me in, where I had friends, I went to school, has lost 330,000 people over the decades, and the impact that that has on civic pride, on neighborhoods, on the tax base, on the schools, it's a crushing thing to be a part of. So when I moved to Portland in 2003, I learned that there was a public agency that was doing some really complicated work. But I was absolutely captivated and knew that I wanted to be a part of what was then the Portland Development Commission. I, I was fortunate to be offered a position here in March of 2007, so just about 18 years. And ever since my first day, I've just been amazed at the talent of the staff. It has always kept me on my toes, and I've always learned, and I don't know what more you can ask for from a job. The work that Prosper Portland does is unique and deeply nuanced. It's hard to define. It's controversial, and that's one of the things I love about it. And I think it's also important to note that Prosper Portland is doing work that a lot of other places around the country are not thinking of. There are no other cities on the entire west coast that have the, the tools that we have to do some of the work that we do. So since taking on my current role in late 2012, it's been a privilege to serve you as the members of the board and your predecessors. I know that I drove my colleagues occasionally mad, and sometimes, some of them mad on a monthly basis with the scrutiny that I put on the items that they were bringing to you, but it was always in service to them, for them to succeed and for their projects to be approved. It was in service to you, who shoulder real responsibilities as members of this board, and it was in service to the people of Portland. So while I am moving on and to focus my career on a different city and a community, I will always have my eyes on Prosper Portland and be supporting the work that you do. And I can say that it has always been my highest career honor to be able to say the words that I worked for Prosper Portland. So thank you all. Today, and if there's any bumps in the run of show today, apologies in advance.
Anyone like to start, say a few things?
Justin, I've been here a really short amount of time, just a year and a half, and it has, it's been abundantly clear from the very beginning that the way we show up here as the board and the way that things move so smoothly was in large part because of all the work that you were doing in the background. You're truly the Wizard of Oz of sorts, and I'm so grateful that I had the chance to work with you and also incredibly sad but excited for you as well. So thank you.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments if I could bottle your organization into like an AI of sorts to like organize the rest of my life in the way that the commissioner briefings are prepared, you know, in advance of each meeting. It has, the, the ramping up into the complex nature of, of the organization was made incredibly easier through, through the work and the effort, the organization, the materials and all that work, which, like Commissioner Slick said, is, is behind the scenes and behind a curtain. But we know that there's a lot of work that goes into it. Without it, we would not be able to, you know, switch tasks and then jump into, into the work that we do here. So thank you for, for all the effort that you've done.
I just want to say it's a joy and a sadness that you're leaving, but I thank you for your patience, your tenacity, and ditto what the other two have said, but you've made, you made the road smoother, the yellow brick road smoother to get here for all of us, making sure that not only does the staff have, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to, but also making sure that we're on task, too, and keeping us going straight ahead. And so I really appreciate that. And you are going to be greatly missed, but I know, and I know, I know that you know the best is yet to come.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, I think this was probably, I sat on a lot of difficult boards. This is a really challenging one, and this was the best onboarding I've ever had anywhere. It is incredible, the work that you do and like how well you communicate and how clearly you communicate. And I'm sad that you're leaving us, very sad that you're leaving us, because you're one of my favorite people that I've met. But I feel like I'm thrilled that you're going to Gresham. Like, I actually think having someone with like your level of talent and skill set and still being in our community is so incredible. And I feel so lucky for a community that deserves that, and a ton of our members live there. And so couldn't be more happy for them. And, you know, see you in the neighborhood, I guess.
All right. Well, I can't add too much to all those comments, but Justin, I will really miss you. It's been about 10 years now that we've been working together, and I've just enjoyed every minute of it. You've just done a terrific job. And I just can't tell you how grateful I am for all of your hard work and organizational skills and inspiration. So really going to miss you and just miss you as a person. So it's been great to develop a friendship. I don't know how Prosper's going to get by without you or how the board's going to get by without you, but we'll muddle along. So good, good luck to you in Gresham. I know, I know you'll do great there.
We'll just ask for some grace in the months ahead.
Okay, well, with that sad and happy note, we'll move along to the meeting minutes. So would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 12, 2025 meeting?
Some moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes passed unanimously. Next public comment for items, not an agenda. Any public comment? Nope. Okay. Great. So next, we have a consent agenda. This is an action item authorizing the terms of a sale of a 700, 700, excuse me, 7,775 square-foot parcel of property in the Lentz Town Center Tax Increment Finance District. This is resolution number 7596. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this item?
I so move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Consent agenda item is approved. So next, we get to the regular agenda item. This is an action item approving terms for lease agreements at the Fairfield Building, adopting the Fairfield Commercial Property Plan and authorizing additional funding for build-out of commercial space and other tenant assistance. And Amber, Amber Breckenridge and Nama Egbedi, pardon me if I mispronounced your name, will present today. And I note that we have an amendment, procedurally, we need to approve an amendment before we approve the motion. So, so we'll, we'll do this in two phases. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, interim executive director Flaherty-Batine. My name is Amber Breckenridge. I'm the project manager two for the real estate team. We are here today before you to get board authorization for lease terms for the Fairfield, approve the property plan, and ask for additional funding for the build-out of the tenant spaces and additional tenant assistance. Next slide, please. The Fairfield is a four-story brick building originally built in 1911, and it's located on the corner of Southwest 11th and Harvey Milk in the new West End District. The Portland Housing Bureau and Home Ford have partnered together since 2017 to assemble funding for the renovations needed for the residential portion of the building. Unfortunately, those resources couldn't be used for the ground-floor commercial spaces. So in February 2023, Prosper Portland got board approval to buy the ground-floor commercial space, which is 2,467 square feet, and, and it's owned under a condominium agreement. It has just recently reopened with 75 affordable home units and is operated by Home Ford, and the internal management is Pinehurst. Next slide, please. The commercial spaces, there's three of them, are divided into anywhere between 600 and 1,000 square feet with one space on Harvey Milk, a corner space, and then the, the third space, which is up in the top-left corner with the roll-up door, which is on 11th. The space on Harvey Milk is designated for a cafe, and the other two spaces are designated for retail. We, the spaces are at warm shell, as you can see, so they're tenant-move-in-ready. We just need to get some occupancy through the city of Portland. And then we're just a block away from Powell's, so we're excited about the foot traffic that that is going to get us there. Next slide, please. This action delivers on the advanced Portland goal of promoting equitable wealth creation and fostering a vibrant central city by providing lease opportunities to a diverse range of tenants who vary in business size, experience, ownership background, and financial capacity. This action also delivers on the city of Portland's Central City 2035 vision for the West End District, which serves as a connector between Portland State University and the Pearl District. Next slide, please. To help with leasing, we've hired a broker through our public solicitation process. The Fairfield is market-owned sites such as CoStar and LoopNet, and we currently have one executed LOI. We just got it today, so I'm super excited about that. And we are reviewing other inquiries for the other two spaces. To help attract businesses who may otherwise not be able to afford commercial space in the downtown area, we can offer flexible lease terms that can help overcome some of those traditional we can offer flexible lease terms that can help overcome some of those traditional financial barriers that small businesses have, such as upfront TI costs. We also provide opportunities for technical assistance through our IBRN partners. And I'll turn it over to Amari to give more details about our leasing terms. Thank you.
Next slide, please. To streamline the retail leasing process and expedite negotiations, we're proposing the following leasing guidelines. Maximum total term of 15 years, including the initial term and the option period of. This lease term length is consistent with other approved lease terms for properties such as the Nickfish. A minimum lease rate of $16 per square foot for each tenant, which is tied to Prosper Portland's affordability goals, and all the operating expenses will be passed through to the tenants. These leasing guidelines will allow Prosper Portland to move forward with lease agreements using delegated authorities similar to the strategy currently being executed at the Nickfish. This approach is anticipated to reduce administrative delays, increase probability of successful lease executions with prospective tenants, while ensuring transparency and alignment with agency goals. The total project budget request is 344,000, allocated primarily to support lease-up efforts through tenant improvement allowance and leasing commissions, with the remainder of the funds designated to cover operating reserves and address potential shortfalls during the projected lease-up period. We're estimating a tripler charge, charges to range between $9 and $12 per square foot for each tenant, while tenant improvement allowance would be $75 per square foot. The total project, the total projected, the, the property is projected to achieve a net operating income of $30,000 in the fiscal year '27, '28, with continued growth in the later years, and finally generating a total cash flow of $880,000 inclusive of the reserve and the sale. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Questions from board members? No? All good?
I just have a comment about the space. I think that as we enter into these projects, I know we're in a condo arrangement here, and then the upper floors are the affordable housing. I know a lot of our affordable housing properties are underwater. And so I just, with a 15-year term lease, I want to make sure that in the lease agreement we have the flexibility to maintain the overall building operations inclusive of our fees. So I know that you'll work that out in the future as tenants come in. But I just want to put a pin in that as we move forward.
Great, thank you.
Comments? No? Okay. All right then, well, we have one amendment to the materials as originally provided, and that was to add a, a cap on tenant rent credit, not to exceed $12,000. So we'll go ahead and take a vote to approve that, and then separately, we'll vote on the motion as amended. So would someone like to make a motion to approve this amendment to the guidelines?
I make a motion to approve amendment to the guidelines.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Passed unanimously. And then would anybody like to make a motion to approve the actual resolution 7597 regarding the, this whole issue?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Fairfield passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have item eight. And this is an action item approving the terms of a commercial property loan, excuse me, commercial property loan, program loan and a small business loan program loan to Creative Homies LLC and to Creative Homies HQ LLC in a total amount not to exceed $700,000 to finance construction and working capital needs of a project at 433 Northwest Fourth Avenue. And Kay Little will present. You're already there. Welcome.
Afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Interim Executive Director Flare T. Patine. Tried to think of an acronym for that, and I just couldn't do it, so. My name is Kay Little, and I'm the investment manager here at Prosper Portland. Next slide, please. We are here to recommend approval of two loans, a commercial property loan and a small business loan in an amount not to exceed $700,000 for a project located at 433 Northwest Fourth Avenue. And we're also here to get approval for the rescission of two, two previous loan approvals for the project. Next slide, please. So this project aligns with two outcomes with, for Advanced Portland. The first one is outcome 3.2, where we're seeking to retain and increase commercial activity for small businesses in the central city. And then outcome number 2.1, which is to help BIPOC entrepreneurs to access, gain access to capital for their projects. Next slide, please. The project also aligns with the Old Town Chinatown Action Plan. This project is actually one element of ongoing work and energy that we're currently seeing in Old Town, between investments that have been made just by Prosper Portland, such as the recently unveiled Inkany Alley lighting project, the soon-to-be-completed Chinatown gate restoration, the Old Town Skate Park, the new Anime Cafe, and ongoing collaboration with our local cultural institutions. There's significant momentum happening throughout the district, and this project actually aligns with many of those projects. Next slide, please. So just to give a quick overview of the project, the building is known as the Horizon Enterprise Building. It's located at 433 Northwest Fourth Avenue, as I mentioned. It's a 20,000-square-foot building, has a basement and three above-ground floors. Next slide, please. As you recall, back in January of 2024, the board actually approved two loans for the project. At the time, the, the project owners were seeking to secure other financing for the project to help to, one, refinance a seller note on the project, also were striving to get funding for construction in the bar area, and also sought approval for loans from Prosper Portland to help to pay for some of the SBA loan fees that were associated with that construction. And so the board did approve $700,000 for the project back in January. Since then, the project sponsors, as they were trying to secure the SBA loans, that wasn't successful. And so they've decided that they wanted to pivot the project, and so now are seeking to instead build out the bar in the basement area. They are leasing the spaces, the, 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 the top two floors, and they actually have 10 signed LOIs for those, those tenants in that space. And they will activate the first floor into an art gallery and wine bar. Next slide, please. And so here we see that the majority of the cost will be actually allocated toward the build-out of the bar in the basement area. And then there are also other portions of the loan that will cover soft cost, the acquisition of FFNE, and also will create a payment reserve for the project. And so here's a breakdown of some of the terms of that loan. As you see, there, there'll be two loans. One is the commercial property loan. That's just under $474,000. This loan, we are considering a high-impact project. And so one of the exceptions here is that the interest rate, it will be set at 3%. It's structured with a 12-month interest-only period, followed by a 15-year loan that's amortized over 25 years for the commercial property loan. This will actually be what's used to build out the basement. And then the small business loan of $226,000, also high-impact loan. So that will also have a 3% interest rate, similarly structured with a 12-month interest-only period. This one is a 15-year fully amortizing loan, so there'll be no balloon payment. And it's also being funded with Old Town Action Plan resources. And so the equity impact, as we've mentioned, it does support the goals of the Old Town Chinatown Action Plan. It act, it does also address gaps in capital access that the property owners have. And the property will also be, the project will be subject to our green building and construction business and workforce equity policies.
Questions from board?
Help people's answer.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any testimony? Testimony, okay. All right then, would anybody like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7598 regarding this project?
I make a motion that we approve resolution 759.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Next up, we have item nine. This is an action item approving the terms of a working capital term loan to OpConnect Inc. in an amount not to exceed $2 million. And Amory Ricks will testify on this matter.
Good afternoon. Surprised there are two of us, not just one. So, good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Flare T. Patine. My name is Catherine Jungel, and I am the Green Cities Industry Liaison on the Business Advancement Team here at Prosper Portland. And we're excited to bring this opportunity to you today about OpConnect. And I'm noticing that the presentation is not up.
They asked for grace earlier.
Got it. Okay, great. And OpConnect, as you will learn, is a Portland, Oregon-based clean tech company, founded here and grown here. And so the next slide, please. Oh, and sorry, I'm gonna do the first part of the presentation with my colleague, Amory Ricks. I will be doing the second part of the presentation. And we're bringing, the item in front of you today is a request to approve the terms of a working capital loan not to exceed $2 million to OpConnect. And then after we give this presentation, Dexter Turner, the CEO of OpConnect, will say a few words about the company and the significance of this loan to the growth of his company. Next slide, please. So OpConnect is African-American and veteran-owned business founded here in Oregon and incorporated in Oregon. They have a facility in the Central East Side. And they offer turnkey EV charging solutions for businesses and commercial property owners. So what that means is that if you're an entity that has a lot of EV chargers, you basically outsource that to a company like OpConnect. They buy the chargers, they install them, and they offer proprietary software, and then they offer operations and maintenance for those chargers. And as you can see, they have a number of local clients that we all recognize here in Portland and Oregon. Then they also partner with strategic corporates across the country, like Assertus and Cummins. And then we'll be talking a bit more about a contract that they just were awarded with Southern California Edison in December. So this is truly a trade sector company, operates nationwide in Canada and Puerto Rico. And actually, they're truly a leader in this sector. It's a very specific niche, this sort of B2B charging solution space. And they've really proven themselves as a leader in the country. Next slide, please. So this actually meets all four goals of Advanced Portland Plan. I don't know how often that happens. But OpConnect is a Green Cities cluster company, one of our priority clusters. This is really significant for industry growth. I think, you know, seeing the investment from Dying in the Truck recently, from Jaguar Land Rover, we're starting to see a lot more investment in the EV charging infrastructure space. This is yet another example of a successful company in that space. And then, you know, this loan is a really great way to support a company at this stage of growth. You know, a lot of times, these companies are fueled by equity capital, and this is a great way to kind of be that first debt capital partner to a startup at this stage. So in terms of the other three goals, as I mentioned, it's the executive team. It's a diverse executive team. Dexter's a founder of color. And I, I think what's really important to mention is that he is, and he might speak to this a bit more, he's extremely passionate about mentoring diverse talent, particularly in leadership roles in the EV industry. He's got partners locally and nationally where he's really, he really puts a lot of effort into that. As I mentioned, there's a small business in the Central East Side, so a growing small business for goal three. And then OpConnect also partners with a lot of partners in the workforce system here locally. They hire students out of the local schools. But I think even more importantly, they offer a range of roles. So a technician role for someone who's just graduated from high school, but also sales, engineering, and these are future-ready sectors, right? EV infrastructure is a growing industry, and it's going to continue to grow. Next slide, please. So in terms of equity impact, these are a few items I've already mentioned, right? That this business offers a range of job opportunities, and they have demonstrated in the past through programs, they participated with us and other partners, and really prioritizing mentoring and employing diverse talent in the industry, either for themselves or mentoring them in the industry in general. We did want to mention that this is a working capital loan, so it's not a construction loan. So that means that none of our policies for construction apply in this case. Next slide. And a blast from the past, this, OpConnect is not new to Prosper Portland. We worked with them for over a decade. This is actually a picture from the PTC Impact Report from 2013, when Pam Neal was the Green Cities Industry Liaison. And we've worked with Dexter a lot over the years on things like workforce grants, referrals to capital partners, participating in a lot of our programming. I believe that there was an early pilot that Pam worked with Dexter on, on, I think, this older technology you see in the picture here. So he is no stranger to us, and it's really, you know, we, we want to bring this up because often for companies in these, in these trade sector clusters, you need to develop these relationships early. There's a lot of, it's not just us, but other ecosystem partners that really play a role in supporting talent and founders, you know, like, like Dexter and his executive team to grow and get to the stage that they can get to today. So it's really quite a privilege and honor to kind of, to be able to be here today and talk about all the, all the relationship we've had with them over the years. So I'm gonna hand this over to Amory to talk a bit more about the business growth and the significance of this loan for OpConnect.
Thanks, Catherine. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Flare T. Patine. I am Amory Ricks. I'm a Senior Business Finance Officer here at Prosper Portland. I'll echo Catherine. Quite an honor to work with this business. OpConnect's journey is really, oh, next slide, please. Thank you. OpConnect's journey is really defined by thoughtful, sustainable growth and a strong focus on R&amp;D. So originally founded as Optimization Technologies, the company developed the software for OpConnect's EV charging stations and then leading into the incorporation of OpConnect in 2016. The company's focus is on disciplined growth rather than rapid scaling. So that's really been the key to its success. OpConnect holds several patents. They completed the Jaguar Land Rover incubator in 2018. Soon after, began to focus on fleet and multifamily charging, and then completed a Series A stock round in 2023. Staying lean to focus on developing the best product is what's winning them contracts now. And it's why, while many of their competitors are laying off talent, OpConnect's primed to grow and engage in further innovation in their industry. Next slide. As Catherine mentioned, this opportunity will fund the upfront costs of fulfilling this contract. OpConnect will provide hardware and software to, for fast-charging units to service Southern California Edison's internal fleet as part of its larger electrification plan. SoCal Edison, they chose OpConnect due to its expertise in fleet charging specifically and its ability to integrate software into their systems. This contract has, as you can see, an estimated $35 to $40 million over its five-year term. And as the incumbent provider, OpConnect holds a strong advantage for that contract's renewal. Next slide. The growth of OpConnect also translates into job creation for Portlanders. So as we see in this chart, OpConnect plans to add jobs across the state. But here in Portland, the forecast includes 50 jobs for Portlanders by 2026, with over 300 expected by 2030. Next slide. And I want to call out the exceptions that we're requesting to our loan program guidelines here. And presenting to this opportunity, to this board- And presenting to this opportunity, to this board, I could imply a higher level of complexity or risk to the deal. But in this case, the primary reason we're here today is because we currently only have one business loan product, and it's capped at $250,000. This product works really well for small businesses, but it doesn't meet the needs of a more mature company like OpConnect. And also, given the larger size of our proposed loan, we're using the U.S. Treasury Index instead of the standard Small Business Loan Program Index, as that aligns better with the larger loan sizes and other Prosper Portland programs. Next. And that concludes what we prepared for you today, Catherine, unless you have anything. Thank you so much for being here.
Right, any questions, comments?
Do we have Dexter come up?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thanks so much for your time. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Dexter Turner. I'm the founder, CEO of OpConnect. And just a little bit about my background, I'm, I was an aerospace engineer by training, excuse me, a commercial aviation engineer for Boeing. And I met my wife at Boeing, and she's originally from Portland, which is how we ended up in Portland, deciding to come home for her to, to raise a family, and why I started our companies in Portland. And I just want to highlight some of the things that, that have already been talked about in this presentation. We are an export company, and I think that's one of the big benefits that we bring to Portland. Eighty-five percent of our sales of our charging stations are going outside of the state of Oregon right now. And we also support a really strong Portland and Oregon-based supply chain with the manufacturer of our charging stations. Our spend for this year, we're projecting, is going to be about $1.3 million with our Portland-based suppliers alone. And we're projecting that growing to about $17 million by 2030. And some of these fabricators, for example, like Swan Island Sheet Metal, they make our pedestals, all of our metal products. They also provide living wage jobs to, to their employees. So, we're really proud that we're not only providing, you know, living wage jobs to the communities, that we also support a supplier base that's doing the same thing. The job creation's already been mentioned, so I won't go into that. But I will talk a little bit about the diversity of the team. You know, I mentioned that I'm a Boeing engineer, and, you know, throughout my early career at Boeing, I always had the experience of being the only black or brown face in the room. And that was one of the things that I really wanted to change when I started my own company. And I'm really proud to say that 43% of our management team is BIPOC right now. Twenty, 29% women on the management team, which is really bucking the trends for technology companies, where those numbers aren't even in the, you know, low teens. And then, overall, 53% of our company is BIPOC, and 21% of, is women. Eighty percent of our board is also people of color, 20% women. And our, our, one board member, one board member tells me that my number-one goal for the next couple of years is going to be to increase the women participation in our company even more, and I think she's absolutely right. And I also want to provide good jobs for our employees. So, like, for example, some of the benefits, we pay 80% of employee healthcare coverage. We provide a $300 a month stipend if you want to purchase or lease an EV, because we want to walk the walk. I don't want to see a bunch of gas cars, you know, parked out in front of our facility. And then, last year, we also launched a program to provide $5,000 a year, up to $5,000 a year, in educational assistance if you want to go back to school to get a degree or do some education to expand your skill set. And I'm really proud to highlight one employee in particular. He actually came to us and applied for a technician job when he was working on a undergraduate electrical engineering degree at Portland State. And we discovered really quickly how intelligent he was. So, instead of just having him build charging stations, we actually talked with his professors, and we got, we set up a cooperative study for his senior year where he was actually designing integrated circuit boards for us and getting class credit in his senior year of college. And he accepted a job with us afterwards. Is, has been the lead designer on a new Level 2 charging station that we're going through UL testing with right now. And I just signed, or just did a letter of recommendation for him last week. He wants to start the master's program at Portland State. And I think that highlights, you know, what I would really like to support. He's a son of Haitian immigrants. English wasn't his first language that I think, you know, really kind of hurt him in his job search, but I think he's found home with us. And then, finally, we're an environmental company. Through 2024, our chargers have reduced an estimated 7,000 tons of greenhouse gases. And our goal is to eliminate over 400,000 tons of CO2 gases by 2035 with our expansion. And this Southern California Edison project is really a big step in, in that direction for us. This is the biggest, or this was the biggest fleet EV charging request for proposal ever. And if you can imagine, this competition was up against really big companies, all the publicly traded companies in our industry. It was a year-long process, multiple down-select rounds and presentations. And I'm just really proud of our team that we beat out all these bigger companies. And I think it was really us stressing this U.S.-based software team, our capabilities, and, and the fact that we're going to be flexible and meet their, their, you know, the customizations that they want us to, to do to the software moving forward. And I think as a result of this win, we've now been shortlisted for a similar RFP with San Diego Gas &amp; Electric. And I'm hoping that we can kind of sweep Southern California and win all the business down there. And we're trying to use that to launch. So, we're kicking off a marketing initiative where we're really focusing on all the big utilities throughout the U.S., Georgia Power, Duke, ComEdison. And we're trying to position OpConnect as the industry leader in utility fleet EV charging. And, and I'll just close by saying, you know, the, the Trump administration really seems to have EVs in its crosshair at, at the moment. And that's presenting some challenges to us that's, that's going to make, you know, this focus on utilities even more important, because the federal dollars, you know, that we're funding some of our customers just completely dried up overnight. We were making a big push to export more into Canada. And as you can guess, U.S. companies are now not very popular in Canada for nothing we did wrong. So, we really appreciate the support that we've received from Prosper Portland to date that's, that's helped us get here. And we hope that we can, that you can support us in our future growth.
Great, thank you very much. Those are great comments, and appreciate the great corporate story and, and all the great things you're doing with your employees as well. Does anybody have any comments about the questions?
Just a quick comment, just want to congratulate you on, on your success and procuring a contract of that size that I hope that it leads to other initiatives. I think the work that you are doing is part of a vibrant ecosystem in EV that we have here in Portland, Oregon, and your, your point of pride to the community. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing, and excited to see where it goes.
All right, well, thank you very much. Great presentation. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7599 regarding the loan to OpConnect?
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thanks very much. Okay. Next, we have Item 10. This is a budget amendment, which we do periodically, as most of you all know. No, actually, this is Item 9. No, it is Item 10. It is Item 10. Okay, huh, this is the wrong number here. Okay. This is an update to the budget fiscal year 24, 25, to update administrative appropriation to include a legal contract increase and decrease contingency. And Tony Barnes will present on this, if he's here. I don't see Tony. Give him a minute or two. Yeah? Okay, sure. All right, we'll take a two-minute break then, and then we'll be back for Tony. The update to the budget. And Tony Barnes will present. This is adopting budget amendment number three for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending July 30, 2025, and making appropriations. Welcome, Tony.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners, Executive Director of Flarete Batine. I'm Tony Barnes, CFO, Prosper Portland. I'll be presenting budget revision number three, which is the third budget revision this fiscal year. Next slide, please. So, unlike most budget revisions, this item is a specific appropriation in a single fund. We'll be bringing a more comprehensive final budget revision for the year that includes a year-end forecast and necessary adjustments, probably in April or May. This item is specifically for appropriating resources from the Business Management Fund's contingency to the administration category to provide expenditure appropriations for legal fees. Next slide, please. This is a very brief budget revision. This is the one slide that focuses on the change. The Business Management Fund has some background here, is a primary, primarily a reserve fund, utilizes managed cash flow across Prosper Portland. It was primarily sourced from a balance of non-TIF program income that was transferred into the fund about 10 years ago to provide cash flow reserve for, to manage non-TIF real estate assets and other cash flow purposes. This is all before the establishment of the Strategic Investment Fund. Its most common use is to provide inter-fund loans to our general fund and grant funds to bridge cash flow with the city of Portland. We've identified the need to expend up, up to $900,000 in legal-related fees. As there might be some reimbursement for these fees in the future, we'll place it in this fund, and any potential reimbursement would come back to this fund and go back into the contingency for the Business Management Fund. This leaves a balance in the fund of about, as shown on the page here under revised three, about $6.7 million. And that's an adequate amount to cover cash flow going forward for all of our city contracts that we manage. And next slide, please. This last slide illustrates the roll-up of a total budget, and this one change from this budget revision, increasing appropriations administration to $14 million out of a total expenditure budget revised for $293 million. And I'll pause there and take any questions you may have.
Nope, getting off easy today, Tony.
And apologize for being late. Thank you very much.
Any questions about that?
It was budget-related.
Just kidding. Would somebody like to make, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 7600 regarding the amendment to the budget?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next up, we have Item 11. This is an information item, an update on workforce and business development programs. And we have a number of presenters today. Robert Smith, Amy Fleck Rosetti, Jaron Jordan, Jennifer Reyes, Dan Ruwan, and Patrick Prince. Welcome to everybody who's here.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director of Flarete Batine. My name is Robert Smith. I use he/him pronouns, and I manage the Entrepreneurship and Community Economic Development Team at Prosper. Today, we'll be, next slide, please, Justin. Today, we'll be sharing information on our workforce development initiatives and small business programming, both of which are essential components of fostering a thriving economy. Throughout the presentation, we will meet the staff that lead these efforts, learn more about the programs and services, and demonstrate the breadth of partnership it takes to accomplish this work. We'll also have some invited testimony where folks will share their experiences with the programming. Next slide, please. The programs that we'll cover today align with and help further objectives two and four of Portland's Five-Year Economic Development Strategy, Advanced Portland. Our inclusive business resource network, including contractor development as part of the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program, the Mercatus Directory, and the Portland Small Business Hub all promote equitable wealth creation by supporting growth and sustainability of our local entrepreneurs. Through business technical assistance and advising and connection of resources, we reduce barriers reduce barriers, create greater access, and help businesses gain knowledge, overcome challenges, and scale effectively. Through our workforce development efforts, which includes both adult and youth programming as well as the Community Workforce Navigation Program, and construction-focused outreach and engagement, pre-apprenticeship training through the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program again, we connect Portlanders to high-quality job opportunities by equipping them with the skills to meet the demands of an evolving labor market. By providing access to education, training, and career coaching, our programs increase opportunities for employability and economic mobility. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll turn it over to your first presenter.
Thanks, Robert. Well, our colleague Jaron Jordan will provide an overview of the COEP program, which also has a workforce development component focused on supporting individuals connecting to careers in the construction trades. This slide shows 16 workforce partners that support program service delivery, Prosper Portland contracts with Work Systems to administer the youth, adult, and COEP programs. Our partnership and investment in the youth and adult programs with Work Systems allows the programs to leverage key federal workforce Innovation Act funds as well as other state resources. Work Systems staff manage service provider contracts, offer ongoing training, and one-on-one support to coaches. They provide fiscal and billing assistance and handle data management and reporting requirements. And I'd like to thank the workforce staff who have joined us today, and particularly recognize Deanna D'Souza, Adrielle Person, Jesse Aronson, Casey Bernard, Patrick Gearing, for their continued partnership to help implement these programs. Next slide, please. Both the youth and adult programs offer long-term career coaching and individual case management to assist partners, sorry, participants with career exploration, training access, work experience, and job placement. The Economic Opportunity Program serves Portland residents age 18 and older who face barriers to employment, are low-income, and would like to find job opportunities. It consists of two phases. During the in-program phase, participants receive enrollment assistance, needs assessments, career mapping, skills training, job readiness, support services, and job search help. In the follow-up phase, once employed, participants have regular check-ins with coaches that help them retain employment and advance within their roles to find better job opportunities. Participants can stay in the program for up to three years, including about one year in the follow-up phase. The Next Gen program targets youth ages 16 to 24 who are low-income, out of school, or at risk of dropping out, and the program includes three stages. During the preparatory phase, coaches support participants with a range of services, including creating a career plan, offering work readiness training, career exploration, support services, and access to mentoring or counseling if needed. In the training phase, participants ready for work and training can access scholarships for industry-specific training. During the placement and retention phase, coaches assist with job search and post-secondary preparation until participants achieve their goals. Similar to the EOP, participants typically engage for up to three years with one year in postplacement support. These programs are funded through a mix of general fund, community development block grant funds, and our Prosper Portland Enterprise Zone funds, as well as leveraged resources from Work Systems. Next up, please. This slide shows outcomes for the adult program for fiscal year 23, 24. Last year, the program served 686 participants. Over 40% identified as women, while 57% identified as Black, Hispanic, or Latinx, Asian, American Indian, Alaskan Native, or two or more races. 87% of the participants entered the program with incomes at or below 30% of the median family income. Overall, those who completed the program experienced an average wage increase of 16% compared to their starting wages. Next slide, please. On this slide, we'd like to just highlight a participant story. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll give you a high-level overview. So this participant was enrolled in Southeast Works Professional Immigrant Credentialing Program, also known as PIC. This program focuses on assisting immigrants and refugees obtain long-term employment based on their degrees or certificates they received in their country of origin. And this participant was a dentist for 22 years in their home country, but was working as a dental assistant in the U.S., and their Southeast Works career coach helped them map out their career goals, which helped them successfully apply for a position at the Multnomah County Dental Clinic, which offered better pay and medical benefits, and they will continue to work with their career coach on their long-term career goals to become a dental hygienist. Next slide, please. This slide outlines our outcomes for the youth program for last fiscal year. The Next Gen program assisted 491 participants, with 72% identifying as Black, Hispanic, or Latinx, Asian, American Indian, Alaskan Native, or two or more races. 49% identify as women, while 78% of the participants entered the program with incomes at or below 30% of the median family income. Out of those who participated, 90 completed the program, and 78 secured employment or continued their education at a post-secondary institution. Next slide, please. For our Next Gen story, this participant worked with ERCO. She came to the U.S. as a refugee without any family support and limited English skills. Her career coach and the program supported her with English classes, clothing, a laptop, and paid for her driving test. She participated in learning opportunities and got a full-time job at New Seasons. She also got her driver's license, bought a car, and continues to work with her career coach on her long-term goals. Next slide, please. All right, now we're going to talk about our Navigator program. The Navigator program is closely coordinated with our Neighborhood Prosperity Network. This program launched in 2015, and it aims to connect job seekers with low-barrier services available in their community. Funding for the program comes from a combination of general fund, community development block grant dollars, as well as our Enterprise Zone funds. We currently partner with the Rosewood Initiative, Division Midway Alliance, Portland Community College, and the Urban League. Unlike the youth and adult career coaching services, this is intended to be more of a lighter-touch program. These services include conducting individual needs assessments to identify suitable job opportunities based on experience and training, and they provide assistance with resume writing, interview practice, connections to job openings, as well as referrals to other programs if folks need help accessing things like rent assistance or training. Next slide, please. Okay, and these are our outcomes. I just want to give a shout out to my colleague Angelica Butler, who built and manages our data system, which we currently are using to collect the data for this program and the program information and outcomes. And during last fiscal year, the program supported 462 participants of these, 78% identified as Black, Hispanic, or Latinx, Asian, American Indian, Alaskan Native, or two or more races. 82% of the participants entered the program at 30% or below MFI, while 77 participants secured employment through this program. Next slide, please. And this is our Navigator participant story. So this participant met with the PCC Navigator Mulu at the St. John's Library. She was retired and facing rising living costs and needed to supplement her income. She had a background in cooking and baking, so the navigator helped her create a resume and apply online for jobs. Mulu supported her with practice interviews and connected her with rental and utility assistance. She also got a job at New Seasons and is as a bakery clerk, and the participant is thrilled and grateful for the assistance that she received. And next up, I'm going to pass it over to Jaron to give an overview of the COEP program.
Thank you, Amy. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director of Flaherty-Butteen. My name is Jaron Jordan. I'm the Project Manager for the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program, known as COEP, a construction industry capacity building program that began in 2020 to increase the pool of skilled workers and eligible contractors to work, to perform work on city infrastructure projects. The program is funded by 1% set aside of hard costs on all city of Portland infrastructure projects over $500,000. In partnership with Work Systems, Inc., COEP is the largest contributor of funds to the Community Construction Training Program, known as CCTP, a regional workforce development program that utilizes 77 community organizations to provide services to those interested in skilled construction trades. Central City Concern and Urban League of Portland provide client outreach and referral services with priority propulations to training opportunities in the most commonly used trades on city of Portland infrastructure projects. The clients are referred to our partners at Constructing Hope, Portland Opportunities Industrialization Center, Oregon Tradeswomen, and Portland Youth Builders for pre-apprenticeship training programs. Upon completion of pre-apprenticeship programs, clients can utilize Labor's Community Service Agency, who are available to provide retention services to apprentices while they make their journey through the programs. COEP also partners with Latino Build, Livelihood Northwest, the National Association of Minorities, National Association of Minority Contractors, Oregon, and the Portland Business Development Group to provide business technical assistance such as bookkeeping, bidding, plans reading, trainings on construction project management software, contract reviews, and plan reviews. Those partners assist eligible contractors to receive the capacity certifications and skills to require to bid on, eventually win bids, and then succeed on city infrastructure projects. Next slide, please. In the fiscal year 2023, 2024, COEP and the regional partners of the Community Construction Training Program provided outreach services to 289 interested participants. Of those interested and enrolled, 103 were able to successfully complete pre-apprenticeship training. Participants who moved on to working as an apprentice in the skilled trades received an average wage of $28.12, a wage that will increase as the apprentices gain more skills and move through the steps of the apprenticeship process and move to journey status in their selected trades. With 80% of participants as identifying as a person of color, the program is reaching many of the diverse communities that Portland call home, that call Portland home, excuse me. Next slide, please. In partnership with our five service-providing partners, we are able to provide business technical assistance to 141 eligible contractors. After receiving services such, training services such as bookkeeping, bidding, plans reading, software training, contract and plans review, 90% of contractors surveyed reported an improvement in their business knowledge, and 75% of clients reported an increase in revenue and project size. With 94% of business owners identifying as people of color, and 39% of business owners identifying as a woman or gender expansive, the program is also reaching many of the diverse communities that call Portland home. Next slide, please. Going forward, COEP will work towards strengthening the connection between workforce participants and eligible contractors, so that eligible contractors can assess the skills workers they need, and workers can receive the training and wages they need also while working on city of Portland infrastructure projects. We will further refine the trainings offered to meet the city's needs of the infrastructure projects, not only for today's work, but into the future. We will create greater awareness around contracting opportunities for COEP clients and collaborate with the Mercatus Network for COVID supports. We look, we look forward to continually supporting workers and the construction contractors with their needs as we do the work, the infrastructure work needed around the city. This includes my updates on the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program. I thank you all for this opportunity to share about this great program and its impact on our community, and I'll pass it back to Robert Smith.
Thanks, Jaron. Thanks, Amy. We're going to do a little line change here. We're going to bring up our staff that are going to cover our small business programming
Thanks, Robert. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Interim Executive Director of Flaherty-Butteen. My name is Jennifer Reyes, and I use pronouns like she and they. I serve as one of the Inclusive Business Resource Network, or IBRN, project managers with Morgan Masterman and Patrick Prince, who's also here on the dais with us. I'd like to recognize our entrepreneurship and community economic development teammate, Connor Chappkas, for gathering the data presented today. The logos on the side represent all our partners serving entrepreneurs for the COEP, IBRN, and PDX Small Business Hub programs, from light-touch navigation assistance to long-term technical assistance. You've already heard from Jaron on COEP, and Dan will share a hub update later in this presentation. Next slide, please. The Inclusive Business Resource Network formed in 2017 and started a new five-year grant cycle in October 2022. Within the new grant cycle to date, IBRN has served a total of 940 unique small businesses in partnership with 18 community-based organizations. IBRN and community partners provide long-term assistance for historically underserved small business owners. Our network approach allows us to connect with these communities and provide technical assistance in meaningful ways. The IBRN change, theory of change, is focused on building wealth and developing assets for traditionally underserved communities by centering business owners of color, leading with outcomes, and convening a community of practice. Next slide, please. IBRN business advisors meet the small business owner where they are in their entrepreneurship journey. To support all journeys, we have three categories of service. I did a launch for aspiring and new business owners to learn foundational skills, stability and resiliency for entrepreneurs looking to hone their business operations and ensure they are benefiting from their businesses, and finally, grow and scale for businesses generating revenue for a few years and ready to expand their business and continue building assets while increasing wealth creation. Next slide, please. To showcase the power of long-term supports, let's walk through a possible path for a budding entrepreneur utilizing services available through our network. A native food entrepreneur connects with the PDX Small Business Hub or the upcoming Office of Small Business, wanting to start a packaged food business in Portland. The hub refers the entrepreneur to our IBRN team. Then we pair them with one of our culturally-specific partners, Northwest Native Chamber, and will receive advising to build their business acumen. This advisor will continue on the journey with this business owner to coach, remove barriers, and refer to other partners in the network. In this scenario, their advisor refers them to Portland Community College Small Business Development Center and enrolls in the Getting Your Recipe to Market course to learn more about scaling their product, while also receiving support from Vibrant Future to build financial forecasts and prepare to apply for business loans. Now the entrepreneur is ready to produce their product in higher volumes and connects with our food industry-focused partner, Hacienda, to assist in further recipe development, packaging, and ingredient sourcing. With their new packaged product, the business sells at local farmers' markets through one of Built Oregon's sponsors' booths, and later is chosen to be a vendor at Prosper Portland's My Peoples Market. Through these markets, the owner meets a buyer from a local grocery store chain. As the business owner seeks to expand selling their products on retail shelves, their advisor refers them to Ty Oregon's Excel Bootcamp to develop a compelling sales pitch, aiding the entrepreneur to seeking additional investments and assist them when pitching their product's viability to New Seasons Market. The business owner is now ready to hire additional staff, increase product production, and has been accepted to the Livelihood Northwest Increase Project, which is an intensive cohort to create their next three-year strategic growth plan. Next slide, please. Our network approach for outreach and technical assistance success is reflected in the demographic breakdowns and client-reported outcomes. In the 2324 fiscal year, the network served 621 unique business owners, 72% identified as a person of color, and 71% identified as a woman or gender expansive. 33% of our clients responded to our quarterly surveys, with 88% reporting they gained skills related to their small business, and 92% said that they felt supported by their business advisor. 77% of respondents reported they made a significant progress towards their business goals. As shown in the entrepreneurship journey, technical assistance paired with professional service allows business owners access to additional supports focused on fiscal operations management, including personal finances, business bookkeeping, business credit, financial modeling and forecasting, as well as loan readiness and increased access to capital. In the 2324 fiscal year, we also managed a one-time funded program to expand the variety of professional services available, including legal, digital marketing, human resources, food and beverage consulting, and more. In the 2324 fiscal year, 249 IBRN clients were referred to and utilized the network's no-to-low-cost professional services offerings. Next slide, please. In each quarterly survey, IBRN clients have the opportunity to provide individualized feedback on services provided. Here are just a few quotes from clients submitted through our outcome surveys. Some excerpts from those quotes. "I learned essential business skills that will significantly help me improve my business operations. This service has helped me remove many barriers. My company's sales increased four hundred percent in one year." Next slide, please. "Our team will continue to leverage quarterly and annual survey feedback to ensure our programming is responsive to the evolving needs of the Portland business community and to advocate for continued entrepreneur supports." For next fiscal year, we've been selected for a fellowship program through Results for America to assist us with our next grant solicitation in late 2026, as we continue to align with the supports and efforts for our up-and-coming new Portland Office of Small Business. Next, I'll pass off to my co-program manager, Patrick Prince, to tell you more about our Mercatus program that further supports business owners of color. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Executive Director Flarete Batine and the board. My name is Patrick Prince. I am the Program Manager for IBRN and Mercatus Directory. I'll give you a high-level overview of Mercatus. It's a pleasure to be here today to share an incredible work happening at Mercatus. At its core, Mercatus is more than just a directory. It's a thriving community dedicated to empowering entrepreneurs of color. Our mission is to provide visibility, support, resources that help businesses grow to grow and succeed. Next slide, please. Nineteen hundred businesses are currently listed in the directory. Over ninety percent are businesses of color. Over sixty-seven follower, or sixty-seven hundred followers on our social media platforms. Next slide, please. Prosper Portland partnered with Avenue Agency to establish brand guidelines and digital marketing strategies to improve directory visibility, foster community, enhance member satisfaction, increase resources, awareness, education to impact the community and its members. One of our most impactful initiatives has been the digital marketing program. Since 2020, we've awarded over four hundred thousand dollars in grants directly benefiting more than two hundred and fifteen businesses. Next slide, please. What's next for Mercatus? We're gonna be doing a website refresh to reflect our vibrant community. To the, to celebrate this exciting milestone, we're gonna be able to do our first Mercatus PDX meetup where we'll spotlight local businesses and foster meaningful collaboration. We're excited to collaborate with our Business Oregon cohort that specializes in training and mentorship. We are expanding our in-person events like the Catering Fair, which will provide more networking opportunities, learning, and meaningful business connections with qualified buyers. Mercatus is about community empowerment and growth. We are believed to be investing in our entrepreneurs of color. We're investing in the economic vitality of Portland. Please see our testimonials on the next slide. And then this is, there're gonna be some testimonies that goes towards this at the next presentation. Thank you. Now passing it to Dan Ran.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director Flarete Batine. My name's Dan Ran. She heard pronounced. I manage the Portland Small Business Hub. And I've also recently become one of the Small Business Liaisons at the Portland Office of Small Business. My presentation today will focus on the Portland Small Business Hub, and Mitch Doherty, the manager of the Office of Small Business, will share more updates about the office in a future board meeting. The Portland Small Business Hub launched in July 2022 with the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding was created in response to the small business needs during the pandemic to access resources and financial assistance. Just a quick recap, in March 2020, Prosper Portland established a hotline for the local businesses. It became a crucial resource connecting them to relief programs such as the Paycheck Protection Program, as well as the Local Small Business Relief Fund, which was managed by Prosper Portland. The launch of the hub and its website, pdxsmallbusinesshub.com, allowed Prosper to discontinue the outdated hotline and enhance its capacity through contracted service providers. It helps refer business owner to resources they may qualify. People can book one-on-one appointments with an advisor in their language or ask questions via phone, email, or chat through the website. I'd like to give a shout-outs to our partners for their work and collaborations. And next slide, please. And the timeframe for this slide and the next is from the project launch in July 2022 to December 2024. During this time, we served close to six hundred businesses. Financial assistance is the most commonly asked questions. Thirty percent of the businesses received help identifying what grants or loans they may qualify or filling out the application for the funding. The hub staff also help connect businesses to technical assistants. They're able to translate the general program language to specific benefits and speak directly to the business's challenges. Thanks to the collaboration from the IBRN team, we were able to refer seventy-two eligible hub clients to utilize their professional services. Toward the end of the presentation, you will hear from Angela, one of our clients, who came through the hub and went on to work with a variety of service providers to grow her business. Next slide, please. Outcome data is collected through follow-up surveys sent to the business owners a few weeks after their appointments. Among the survey responses, sixty-eight percent of the clients learned about the resources for the first time. Seventy-four percent reported they gained more knowledge about the support available. In addition to the appointments, the hub staff responded to over two thousand inquiries through phone, emails, and chats. The hub also maintains an online resource library and a list of workshops and networking events locally. They're among the most frequently visited webpages. Additionally, we host a monthly webinar series sharing funding opportunities available in the region. It has got over five hundred attendees since its launch in October 2023. Next slide, please. With the launch of the Portland Office of Small Business, the hub's offerings such as the appointment scheduling and online content will be absorbed into the office. This is just a teaser for what's coming, and Mitch will share more updates in the future. We know there is a need for a centralized place where businesses can find relevant information in one place. We know that human-to-human support is crucial. Having someone to guide business owners through the variety of nuanced services and partners create a better experience for people to get to what they need. We will continue to build the service offerings with the accessibility in mind. Offering language support is a part of it. Additionally, we'll be working on providing in-person support, more proactive community engagements, on-demand online content about business services. And lastly, but just as important, we'd like to celebrate the business owners in Portland. More to come, and thank you. I'll pass it back to Robert.
Thank you, Dan, Patrick, and Jennifer. Now that you've all had a chance to hear from staff and learn a little bit more about the programming, we have some invited testimony and guests that would like to share their experiences with the work, so I'd like to invite those folks up now. I'll let them introduce themselves as they share their stories, but we, today we have with us a participant in Southeast Works Professional Immigrant Credentialing Program, executive director from a partner organization that supports our youth workforce development, as well as the Community Opportunities and Enhancements Program, and a small business owner who has participated in a number of offerings through Prosper Programming. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Yovinia.
Доброго вечора, доброго всім настрою. Мене звати Євгенія, я з України, місто Охтирка, Сумська область, прикордонна з Росією.
Good afternoon. First of all, I will present myself. My name is Natalia. I was, I work as the Early Learning Works Career Coach at the Southeast Works. And today I'm here as the Ukrainian refugee and the interpreter for our client, Євгенія Картус. Now I will translate. So, hi, everyone. My name is Євгенія, and I moved to the United States in April 2024 because of the war that started in Ukraine. I'm from the little town Охтирка, which is in Сумы region, which is neighbor to the, to Russia.
С перших, ми в 2024 році приїхали в США за програмою НАТО Україн. Наше місце було майже зруйноване, і ми були вимушені переміщатися, шукати пошук нового життя для своїх дітей та собі.
So we moved here in April 2024 because our little town was almost destroyed, and we were looking for other places where we can settle. I was looking for a place for me and my little kids as well.
На жаль, руйнування ще досі продовжується. Зруйноване на днях школа була. Ми шукали нове місце, ми знайшли прихисток в Америці. Ми дуже вдячні людям та країні, яка надає можливість жити у безпеці нам та нашій сім’ї з дітьми.
Unfortunately, the war is very hard in Ukraine and still ongoing. Recently, a few days ago, the school was destroyed there in, like, our town. That's why me and my kids, we were looking for another place. And we are so very grateful to the people in the United States that they give this support and that we were able to find a safe place for us to stay here.
В Україні я здобула вищу освіту, працювала двадцять років бухгалтером на автовій компанії. Приїхавши до США, я підтвердила диплом, що прийняться до американської світи. Але, продовжить?
In Ukraine, for twenty years, I worked as the accountant in the oil company. And when we moved here, I evaluated my diploma, and right now my Ukrainian diploma is equal to American education.
Але швидко зруйновано, що працювати бухгалтером треба достатній рівень англійської та місцеву систему обліку треба знати гарно, а це займає час.
But as soon as we moved here, I understood that my English level is not good enough to work as the accountant. And not only English, but I also have to know some accountant specifics in this, like, region. So probably this is not the way for me to earn money right away.
У мене двоє діток, п’ять та чотирнадцять років. Моїм пріоритетом було найшвидше знайти забезпечення для родини. Я вирішила вибрати професію, де рівень англійської не такий критичний для початку, і це дає можливість заробляти та стає швидкіш можливість самостійно фінансування своєї родини.
I have two kids. They are five and fourteen years old. So I was looking for some profession that can help me to earn money right away and be able to support, financially support me and my kids by myself. That's why I was looking for some profession that are able to do that.
Так, я пришла до рішення отримати навчання CDL та отримати водійське посвідчення. Це не просто вибір професії, це вибір, який дає змогу фінансово незалежне бути та впевненим бути в майбутньому.
That's how I decided to stop on the CDL program, not just to receive the CDL driver license, but also to start my new path to support and earn money by my own and to, like, start a new profession in general.
Отримання CDL вимагає навчання, а навчання - фінансування, тому я звернулася WorkSource, Southeast WorkSource, за програмою економічних можливостей, яка надається, програма підтвердження професійних імігрантів, і вони стали для мене величезною підтримкою.
So to obtain the CDL classes, it needs some financial expenses, which I didn't have. So I didn't have an option to pay it. That's why at this stage, I turned to the Economic Opportunity Program, called Professional Immigrant Credential Program at Southeast Works. And they were huge support for me, and they covered the expenses for the classes in one hundred percent.
Завдяки WorkSource я змогла розпочати навчання, і зараз отримую важливі навички. Це дає можливість стабільного рівня доходу отримати та самостійно забезпечити сім’ю.
So thanks to the Southeast WorkSource, right now I'm getting new skills, and I'm about to finish my CDL classes. And that will be my start of the way when I can support my family by myself.
С початку я планую завершити навчання. В подальшому можливе відкриття власного бізнесу та стати незалежним оператором-водієм. Це дозволити бути незалежно з моїй родині та дати можливість іншим родинам забезпечувати себе.
So first of all, I plan to get CDL and also to start working as a driver. And in the future, I'm even thinking to maybe make an, open an organization that will also not only support my family, but also help other people to get work where they can earn money for their families as well.
Я дуже вдячна Southeast WorkSource за підтримку, бо це не просто фінансова допомога, це можливість почати нове життя. Він нас змусила шукати нові шляхи. Завдяки такій організації ми можемо не лише адаптуватися, а й будувати майбутнє для наших сімей і дітей.
I'm very grateful to Southeast Works and WorkSource for the support because for me, it's not only about money and financial support, but thanks to organizations like that, they give us the path to find our own place in the new country when we have to find a new path. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yovinia, and thank you, Natalia, for being here today. I'll pass it over to you, Angela.
Okay, hello. Perfect. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today. My name is Angela Arevalo Smith, and I am the founder and owner of Bond de Sol. We are an ethical fashion brand that focuses on, on small-batch artisan-made products. And before starting my small business, I was actually in healthcare operations. And after having my son, I had to take a pause in my career. And as much as I loved being home with him, I also realized that I needed something for myself. So I took the leap and I started my small business, Bond de Sol. It was a high school dream that I had, and I knew that I wanted to incorporate an element of giving back and empowering women. So with that, once I started my small business, I realized that I couldn't do it alone. So I hit the ground running and I researched all of the resources that were available here in Portland for small businesses. I was completely blown away at all of the resources that were available. And to be completely honest, anyone that's looking to start a small business, you need to come to Portland because there's so many amazing resources available. So we need to be proud of that. Once I applied to grants, I, the first one I applied to was the Mercatus Digital Marketing Grant. So I applied there. I received that grant. That allowed me to invest in the initial branding and website for my business. And that was very key in giving me an online presence, giving me credibility as a small business owner, and also connecting with my customers. I then received a grant through the Groundbreak Program with Livelihood and Accelerate, where I had access to coaches, and so they helped me with the financial literacy and navigation strategy, marketing, and helped me to grow my business. Additionally, I received photography grant through the hub. I was able to get initial headshots, and we know photography can be very expensive when you're starting out. And I was also able to get product photos, and that helped with my online presence. And again, that's something that's very important when you're representing your brand. All of these programs didn't just provide funding and grant opportunities. To me, they provided me with what I like to call my quote-unquote advisory board. You're navigating a small business, you're a solopreneur, you need a thought partner, you need someone to talk to. And I was given that opportunity through all of these amazing grants and resources that we have right here in Portland. They gave me the tools to be able to make informed decisions for my business, and they also allowed me to lead with confidence as a business owner. And because of these resources, my small business is now thriving. I'm going into year two. And so there's so many exciting, amazing things on the horizon, and I'm very grateful for all of the resources that I've been provided with. One of the things that I did, did learn, I'm very involved with the community in terms of markets, networking events. I was actually very surprised that not, not a lot, a lot of small business owners were aware of these programs or they were afraid to ask for help. And to me, this is why these programs are so important, right? Like, as a small business owner, you wear multiple hats. Like, as a small business owner, you wear multiple hats. So to be able to have access to resources, to education, and, and mentorship really can make all the difference for, for small business owners. So with that, I just want to say that I'm incredibly grateful for all of the opportunities and resources that have been provided to me. My hope is that these programs will continue to grow and that there will be more outreach so that many small businesses in the community can benefit. So thank you so much for having me. Thank you for all of your support. And again, yeah, happy to be here. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you for being here. Rana?
Hi, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Shay. My name is Rana. I am the Executive Director of Portland Youth Builders, a Bureau of Labor and Industry certified pre-apprenticeship program, serving low-income, majority-folks-of-color, earn-a-living wage. I'm also excited to say that we will be celebrating our 30th year of service this year, so we've been around for a minute. We were originally located up in North Portland in St. Johns, and we moved out to the Lentz area as our population moved. A lot of our students were moving further south as rents were lower and it was more affordable to live down there. And we were able, through the help of Prosper Portland, many, many years ago, help purchase our first location out there, help rehab that location. And we've been able to serve a ton of youth ever since. I want to talk to you about our Bridge to Construction Program. Our Bridge to Construction Program is a rigorous eight-week program that serves youth 18 to 26 that are ready and dedicated to get a job in skilled trades. We have an attendance policy that's about 95%, and our job is to help prepare folks to go into skilled labor. The number-one thing that we hear from employer partners is that we are looking for folks that are reliable, that can come to work, that we can count on. And it's a lot of soft-skilled building. We have hard-skilled building, definitely, and the soft skill is what a lot of our partners have been telling us is, is needed. So PYB has received the Community Opportunities and Enhancement Program funding, you know, as a part through Work Systems, Community Construction Training Program since 2020. Since then, PYB is able to serve 367 youth, of which 71% identify as BIPOC, of which over 95% are low-income. Of the 367, 135 since then was directly served through the COEP funding. And of that 135, 77% identify as BIPOC, and 98% were low-income. Since then, 90% of the folks that we enrolled have completed with achieving their BOLI certificate that helps them become job-ready to enter the trades. They, 70% of those have been verified working in the construction industry. And of those 70%, the likelihood, the, the number is likely to be high, but when our folks start to work and start making money and income, it's tough to get in contact with them. So we've seen a trend that it does trend higher. And of that, 46% of folks went into union and non-union apprenticeship. And to get into apprenticeship is very, very difficult. It is a difficult task, and it takes an individual to have the drive, the want, and the desire to go into a field where the folks that we serve, they are the minority. They do not look like they're foreman, they're superintendent, and typically, more often than not, they are one of two on a job site. And we're preparing these folks to go out there and sometimes the solitude of the work, where your allies are, where your resources are, and how to become successful within that field. I have three student testimonials here. I'm gonna keep it brief. And I promised them that I would quote them, because they were like, you must quote me. I was like, no problem. Before PYB, I didn't have a path or a sense, or a sense of direction. What PYB gave me is more confidence about my future, and it offered me a path towards a career that will provide me and my family financial stability and growth. This person was enrolled into the Carpenter's Apprenticeship. PYB helped me with my confidence, finding my voice, learning to take feedback, and hold myself accountable. I look forward to completing my apprenticeship with the Carpenter's Union and being a journey worker, as well as a leader within the union. I want to give back to PYB and future students. Further into the future, I hope to buy my first home and the first person in my family to buy a home, and start my own business. Lastly, I wish more people knew about programs like this. This program helped me, give me direction, and also helped me remove obstacles along the way. I'm now set for success, and in the future, I will have the tools I need to navigate the construction industry. I'm excited not just to succeed as an apprentice, but I also want to eventually take leadership roles in the Carpenter's Union. These three stories are focused on the Carpenter's Union, but we have a lot of connections with a lot of other unions and the highway trades. And I just wanted to give you a, just a gle, a glimpse of the work that we do. And I want to thank our partners at Work Systems and thank the COP program to, to help us with funding and allow us to do, to serve these sensitive communities, to help them, as one of my students would say, break the generational curses. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Rana. I will just say that Shay and I had an opportunity to tour Portland Youth Builders recently, and it was great to be able to walk through the classrooms and see the kids and see how excited they were about the opportunity to learn. And so Portland Youth Builders has been a great partner. They do excellent work. So I do want to thank Yovinia, Natalia, Angela, and Rana for taking the time. I think it's great for us to share information about our programming, and I think it's great to hear firsthand from folks that have benefited from it. So again, thank you all for being here today. I would like to, this is the last time, but I would like to invite staff back up for just kind of closing before we wrap up this item, so. I think this is also important, too, for us to be able to see the folks that manage this work on a day-to-day basis and how many of them there are. So I'll scoot over. I just want to close by thanking the board for the opportunity to be here today to share more information about what we feel is really meaningful and really impactful programming for our community. I also want to thank the staff who represented this work today, including folks that did not present, our amazing project coordinators Angelica Butler and Connor Chapkus, and our IBRN Program Manager Morgan Masterman. Administering and managing these programs is a massive list. And these folks show up day in, day out, in support of the work, in support of each other, in support of our partners, and in support of the communities we serve. I cannot thank them enough for all they put into this work and their tireless efforts. I also want to lift up what you're seeing on the screen. Throughout today's presentation, you've seen the logos and you've heard the names of the partners we do this work with. There is no question that we are dealing with a challenging budget year, and more universally, we're contending with a climate of uncertainty. But I cannot stress enough the importance of continuing to do this work and doing it this way, collaboratively, in partnership, and around shared values. To realize the results that have been shared today, maintaining these relationships and this approach to our work should be a priority. So I also want to thank all of our network partners and their staffs for their dedication and commitment to serving small businesses and serving folks with employment opportunities. So thank you again for the opportunity and for your support of this work. And I think with that, we're prepared to, for questions or comments.
Like to start?
I just want to say, I, I really appreciate this, the outline of the programs. It helps being a new board member. And I also think oftentimes when we think about economic development, we think about businesses, and we don't think about the people who make those businesses successful. And so I think the, the programming that we just talked about and the wealth creation that we talked about is much more dispersed than one business, but all of the people who are supporting that. And they, I just want to say, I really appreciate the sort of investment in workforce and the bridge that that builds, like, long-term for our city and our community. Without those investments, I think we can watch, you know, whole civilizations decline, frankly. And so, and it was great having folks who are participating in the program engage in up here. But I want to thank the staff, and I know having our own workforce trust and all of the barriers that it takes to sort of move people through, very systemic barriers that are designed to keep them out and keep them locked out of places. To break through those and help people move into them is really critical work. So I just really appreciate you all for doing that work.
I want to second that and also just comment that it is economic development. Our workforce is really important for us to be able to grow our region. So in addition to the amazing work that you've been doing, it is foundational for us. And so I'm really appreciative of all the work you've done and have been doing for years to move that effort forward for, for Portland.
I'm also appreciative of all the work, and I think the testimonials are really great. And, and I think wherever there's opportunities to highlight those voices, both obviously within rooms like this, but you know, as, as one of the speakers said, being able to amplify that to other small business owners, putting it in the context of the people for whom the benefit is very tangible and might encourage others to apply as well, I think, or maybe some things to, to carry on forward. But really excited to see and look forward to future updates. Thank you.
I'll just echo what everyone else said and just keep up the good work. I think the presentation was great. And Mercatus is really popular, and so I've gone there a couple of times, so.
I literally just almost got a...
So I just say, keep up the good work. Yes, great.
Well, I would just echo all those comments and just say how much I appreciate the presentation today and all of your hard work. These programs are really near and dear to my heart. I was the board chair for the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber for a long time, longtime partner in the IBRN program. And I've seen the, you know, the effect that technical assistance and these other programs have had on individuals and really small businesses, and they're life-changing, you know? So I think this is a, a very noble cause, and it's also something that's not, you know, doesn't pop up in the press like some of our other efforts do. It kind of just clicks along quietly in the background, helping people every day. And so it's very much appreciated. So thank you to, all, thanks to all of you for your great work, and thanks to our partners, too. All right. Thank, thank you. It was a great presentation. Yeah, so. Do we have any public testimony or anything? No? We're all good? Okay. All right then. If we have nothing else, then the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is now adjourned. Thanks very much.
Now that we're adjourned, I'll remind folks, we have a celebration for Justin Douglas at the Canopy by Hilton over on Gleason Street, just down the street.